That's okay.
It all works.
It's okay.
All works, all happy and healthy, so.
I'm gonna give that to you, Brad. I'm gonna try and log in.
Is Mohammed on call?
No.
He was the one I went to last time, was it?
Just letting them know you're there, alright. So, okay, so see, I'm entering the room. So if anybody sees anything up there that says somebody's waiting.
Because she won't be able to log in now.
Okay, I can hear you, Brad. Can you hear me?
Oh, loud and clear, yes we can.
Alright, I'm hearing you. Do you want to turn it down?
No, that seems like a good volume.
That's okay for me, I mean, it's fine.
Okay, that's, we're only gonna need that if we have other people join via Zoom to... We don't have any applicants, I don't know if we'll have anybody tonight.
Okay.
Alright, let's start the meeting.
How do I do that, just like?
Good evening, welcome to the...
Well, you need to start the meeting before the people are gonna watch it, right?
Do you need to start?
No, the recording is started.
Okay.
What you need to do, Brad, is just say, "Action." Action. Good evening, welcome to...
Do you need, so that meeting says, "Start."
We need to click on that, "Start."
I'm gonna do it anyways. It says we're recording.
Good evening, and welcome to the May 24th meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. Our role call is Anthony. President. Derek Cholery, present. Georgia Woodbury.
Present.
Brad Fogg is present. Martin, our liaison.
Present.
Kami Munson, our code enforcement officer. She just left the room, but she is present. What did I do with mine?
I think Derek had it.
Oh, did he?
Yeah. He slipped up his papers. Yes.
Okay, our first item of business tonight is... The pool of the April 26th ZPA minutes, their motion.
I moved that we approve the, Georgia Woodbury, I moved that we approved the meeting, the minutes from the... April 26th.
Sorry, I actually have to comment on that, I read through them. So when we voted on the last thing we voted on, there were things, there was something voted, and then the lawyer said something, and then that's what we changed it to, correct? Because it said nay, and I was nay the first time, but I was for it the second time after the lawyer reworded it. I just want to make sure that was on the record, but I know, I saw that, that it said three to one, but I remember at the time, when it was first worded, I wasn't for it, but when the lawyer kind of charmed in and worded it, I was... Came to, and I was actually for it at the end. You can go back and watch it, I raised my hand. And I thought you noticed at the end, so I said, "Yes," at the end, okay. But that's the only thing I want to clarify, other than that.
So what we'll do is we'll do a second, a discussion, amend the minutes to record four, oh, instead of three, one. And then we'll vote on that. Okay, so is there a second to the approval? Sorry about your product. Okay. There are seven to the amendment, I mean, is there a second? Is there an amendment to the motion? Should you have that read four zero instead of three one?
Georgia Woodbury, I moved that we accept... That we accept the amendment, changing it from three to one, to four to oh, as approval on the 309 Portland Road Appeal.
Is there a second to that? Can I second my own?
Yeah.
I second. Any discussion? All those in favor, has amended? So the final vote will be recorded. Mr. Shorley reports he voted a positive for that to four zero on the final vote. Our next order of business is discussion of ZPA duties, responsibilities, expectations. I will freely admit that after the last three days went home, and for like two or three days, I had trouble sleeping. And I wasn't particularly... And happy with a lot of things that... That happened. And I heard from... I'm manager, I heard from the... Two additional members of the town council, not including a council meeting. About the meeting and things that happened in the meeting and... This... All sorts of stuff. It was just flowing in regularly. Ultimately... I put together... Page. Throw one more down that way. Martin, I'm gonna give you another page for... Krista. Alright. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to start off... This is the way that when I first started, we... ZPA ran things, and as a mediator and an arbitrator, we were human resources for 12 years, I got thinking about how we really, you know, did our mediation and our arbitration hearings. And in cases, you know, mediation was not binding. Arbitration was binding only if you paid huge amounts of money for it. So... What we do here is a non-binding... Arbitration, if you will. In other words, we listen to both parties, we come up with our questions and stuff like that, and we come to a decision. So one party may like it, the other party may not. In arbitration, both parties generally sign off on it, but here, that may not necessarily be happening. I just want to remind, go over this thing, that our purpose really is to hear appeal, the appellate appeals and human resources, without the grievance. So a person comes in, they file a grievance or appeal against the town. Either a decision that the code enforcement officer might make. What one of the zoning ordinances are, saying, well, you can only have this much... You gotta have this much space between your property line and your shed, or you gotta have this much setback for utilities. You gotta have this much setback for whatever it might be, or we want to do a swimming pool, but you can't do it in this area. Or if you want to do a second floor addition, or some poor guy... Builds his house. And then the mortgage inspection shows that the house is too close to the road, and...
I remember that one.
And we need to, we have to look and decide whether or not the guy used a string and a screwdriver to measure the distance from this road frontage to his porch. And, because he'd already dug the foundation. And it's like, you know, what do we do, what do we do, what do we do? I mean, so we have to make a decision on, on, guess what, your house is, you know, four feet too close to the road, because you used a screwdriver and a string. And you measured it over a straight land.
Stretchy, isn't it?
Yeah, and you used it over the, over the flow of the land, because it was kind of like a downhill grade, as opposed to air footage, straight, straight line distance. And that wasn't necessarily a great outcome, anyway. So those are the things that we're really restricted to look at, I mean. Planning board also has appeals process. So the people can appeal their request to build, and the planning will reduce the plan. They can also grant appeals for what they do in terms of construction of homes and businesses, whatever it might be. But we are in fact a quasi judicial body appointed by the council. And our decision, if we make a decision that somebody doesn't like, the only way it can be overturned is if one of the parties either goes to Superior Court. It files an appeal with Superior Court. Or they go to the town council, and the town council makes its own appeal or its own exemptions to the ordinances that it does. And usually, there's a monetary value to that, that the town collects a sum of money to enter into a binding agreement that will also allow them to change their property deeds, whatever needs to happen. So there's two ways to do that. But generally speaking, if they want to appeal, they go to the Superior Court and look to have a decision overturned. Now, a recent one is the Cop Motors case, where they have gone, correct, came, they've gone to court. Or they've got legal things going, saying that they want our decision upholding the codes overturned. And so that's still out there, and never, never will be pending. Now...
And then they file an appeal of the appeal.
Of course.
Which they can do... They can re-appeal your decision and come back to you again, I believe, under the ordinance.
Well, that, that's okay, I mean, but...
Yes. And then they have to go, but, but yes, they do the...
Process. Yep. One of the things that... Also, kind of got my car a little bit, after the last meeting, going way back to the several years ago. Was, you know, how we ourselves behave, because we are in fact a quasi judicial board. And we need to have that decorum of a quasi judicial board. I mean, you know, I really expect that we can maintain a high standard when we sit there at the board, and sometimes I feel that myself, and I need to, you know, rethink, I get caught up in things, and it's not necessarily pleasant. So I took a hard look at myself to try to do okay in that meeting, I'm saying, well, I did okay, but not the way I should have. In terms of either controlling myself or making sure that the conversation went the way that it should have gone, and not gone over the boundary lines of what we can and can't do. And one of the things that we certainly can do by maintaining our own integrity is, we can't be provocative, and we can't be confrontational. We're a very neutral body, we're supposed to be neutral. And we can't have any, we shouldn't have... We shouldn't have any preconceived notions and decisions already made in our minds, because that way, we... If we give that perception, then the public loses confidence in what we do. Or the appellate, you lose confidence in what we do. So we really need to work on, I need to work on how I present myself. So that something, that guy's real, you know, butthole, and he's not gonna rule my favor no matter what. And he's not promoting, you know, the best interests of either the town or the party involved. And I mean, it's actually our job to promote the best interests of everybody involved, and come to a resolution within the statutes and within the ordinance. And we just can't nearly really say the statutes are wrong, the ordinance is wrong. I mean, we have to find cause for that. And in the case, last time we had the bed and breakfast. And the ordinance did not cover. So we ended up being more of a legislative body, as opposed to a adjudication body coming to a decision, we made a decision, and then legislated something that the town, to its ordinance process, hadn't done before. So that gives us an example of the scope.
You're speaking about limiting the spaces and the guests.
Like in the bed and breakfast thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they wanted four. The ordinance is either just three, or did, or just more than five. What happened to four and five?
Right.
So we made a decision that set, in essence, a precedent. That another bed and breakfast could come in and make four units, as opposed to three.
Right.
Or they might even be able to make five units, because the ordinance doesn't cover five.
Right.
Just more than five, and that's, so that's...
I think it was five or more.
It actually, it says four, it says more than five.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I saw that, and that's why I, what I try, what I try to do is I try to give the board all of the factual information that you need, so that we don't have to take time during the meetings flipping through books, finding setbacks. And in reading the context, if I had to make an interpretation, it would have been, well, yeah, four or more, your hotel motel. But I said to her, you can go to, and I always tell people, you're not gonna offend me, if you go to the Board of Appeals, but like, go to the Board of Appeals and have them interpret it.
No, you don't know.
And I give them the strict definitions, they can make the decision.
Yeah, the language here is better than breakfast.
Because it needs to be, that, that needs, to me, needs to be addressed.
The bed and breakfast, it did say three.
Yeah.
Or motel hotel, more than five.
Yeah.
So we kind of kept wondering what happened with fours and fives. So that's a time or an example that we actually legislated. Or made an adjudication that resulted in a legislation. Or the creation of legislation. So we're not here to promote private interests. We're not here to think that we have a special position that can do special influences. I mean, we act as, we, you know, live as a group and die as a group. And and we have to really produce, you know, perform our duties. In such a way that our conduct doesn't manifest bias or prejudice. And that's sometimes hard to do, like, just a stupid facial expression. It might be something like, you know, raised finger, like, nobody wants to have a finger pointed in their face. And it's difficult, it was difficult for me to not watch it, and I did it a couple of times, put my hand, I can like speak to the hand, like in a common manner towards the attorney and Mr. Whitney's father. To say, no, I'm not gonna let you speak, you know, keep things under control there. So that all being said... And I'm willing to listen to anybody, because I think that we need to have any concerns made known, so that we don't repeat. Or how, have another meeting like we had the other night. And one of our people that work in towns that, you know, applied, and we seem to have an awful lot of zoning board appeals meetings, more than some other towns. And I kind of took that in such a way as, like that's not our fault. The zoning board of appeals doesn't create a situation that causes appeals to be filed. So I didn't take that to heart. But if we're having more zoning board of appeals meetings than, let's say, Weedfield or Buckfield or whatever, that, that that means that the ordinances that are causing those appeals really need to be looked at, you know, like, why?
I think we've got a lot more people moving into town, too. We have a lot of new people that are coming into town, compared to some of the outlying areas. So that you know, the zoning board of appeals, okay, so somebody wants to build this house like the people that wanted the bed and breakfast. You know, they don't know.
No, I understand, I understand.
But I think there's a lot more new, they're trying to attract business, they're trying to attract people. It's great.
But, but I will add to that, to do that correctly without involving any other appeals or adjudication process, the zoning ordinances need to reflect that. And it, like I say, it's not the zoning board of appeals fault, that there are a lot of meetings.
No.
We only react to the appeals that are filed, because something doesn't appear to be right on the other side. And, you know, it's like, okay, we understand that, let's look at both cases. And see, so the process I'd like to use is in the lower part of the page, the back of the page, is the typical arbitration mediation tool and process that a public meeting... It's two sided page. So I'm working on the lower part.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So in conducting a review, what I like to do, if it's agreeable, everybody, you know, we'd have a motion like we typically do to open a public hearing on whatever it is. And once it's opened, we ask the appellate on the grievance, if you will, say, why do you think you should be given the appeal? But is it a setback, hardship, what kind of appeals, but why do you think that you should be given the appeal? That's why usually start, tell us, you know, tell us why you want the appeal. And they present their case, and we ask questions in order, like, does anybody have any questions? And let me know if anybody has questions, we question the person. And then, town, would you please tell us why? The decision was made to deny a permit, or say you can't build here, or you can't... In the case, a couple of months ago, you know, build a shed, where the person wanted to have a shed, you know, why? And then we ask questions of the town. And if a party A wants to ask a question about, and we did this quite well the other night, if Mr. Whitney wanted to ask a question of the town, and, you know, let's do it through the board. And vice versa, so we control the, the idea is to control the back and forth. So that people aren't directly questioning and looking back and forth and getting into an argument, and challenging each other. And, and we started to lose control. And it becomes a ugly situation, a potentially ugly situation.
Right, the other thing is, is that you know, you, you do need, you need to control the room. The thing about having, you know, people having sidebar conversations is that it's really difficult to hear, if you can hear them at all, because it's being recorded, and it's important that if anybody's speaking, they're at the lectern, so that they can be recorded and they can be heard. And I'm guilty of that, even myself. I shouldn't be answering questions from the back of the room, I need to...
I want to think generally, can you stop the podium?
No, I know you do, but I know there's been a couple of times that I have it, because I'm sitting there taking notes, and I need to be even more diligent about doing it.
So, I mean, these are just tiny little things that we work on to, you know, break things into a... Gee, I don't want to use, I don't want to use the word court roller, it is kind of like a... It's like four people sitting in a...
I mean, the next, you said, and after us, it's the Supreme Court.
Exactly.
You know what I mean?
So, and after that, then we would just ask the parties, again, if they have any questions with each other, and then we would make our motion. And we would discuss, we would ask questions of people. And one of the things that we would ask the questions that we feel necessary, and if, and public comment, because in an open meeting, the public always has the right to comment.
Yeah.
Because it may be a property offender that didn't submit something in writing that we don't have, so that they have the right to talk, and and they may want to ask questions of how things are going, we direct that through the chair, and ultimately, a closed discussion, or closed the public hearing, have a discussion and make a motion. Now, all of our motions should be made in the affirmative, in other words... Let's take Mr. Robb. The affirmative would be to grant his appeal, and then there would be in this case, four zero against, the reason we do it that way, it gives him the foundation to go to the Superior Court system. So that he can say, I was denied this, my appeal wasn't granted, so I'm reappealing to the courts. So we try to make our motion to the affirmative, and that gives the foundation for them to appeal if, if they want. Does that make sense to everybody? So if I don't have him before me, the decision that the attorney wrote. And I mean, my second motion was to grant in the affirmative to have them do that. And then we hold our vote. It's pretty simple, but after the last meeting, I just want to make sure that we maintain our decorum. And that, you know, we are the people I don't want me to be superior, but we're the ones that are setting the tone for how the meeting goes. Now, one of the other things that comes up in that meeting, or that, that hearing, was Anthony asked a question, Derek, I think was going there a couple of times, is that you know, when did the code enforcement officer make the discovery? How long had it been since the structure was built, and the notice of violation was given? And I whispered Anthony's name, well, I think it was given after they did the final inspection of the second structure, when they had to go on, on the property. So what I wish, I think I whispered that year, did I, something to that effect? And there was a lot of conversation over that. When did it happen? When did it happen? Why did it happen? This is a very difficult fall. The zoning board of appeals in its decision-making process, and the statutory authority it has, doesn't care when the discovery was made. There is no limitations on discovery in terms of enforcement of ordinances. Because it's, in essence, a civil matter.
Correct.
It's a civil matter, so there is no limitations on discovery. So we shouldn't be considering the length of time between discovery or, or event and discovery. Because a person could just drive by down the road, and maybe they've got a had a problem with a person, saying, well, I know, that's not right, I'm gonna do the code enforcement officer thing, and they had been wrong for a number of years, and the code enforcement officer never saw it, because they never caused... And they report it, and all of a sudden, there's an issue that has come to the zoning board of appeals. So that's something that we need to try and keep out of our discussions. But when did you discover? Or why did you discover? Well, we really don't care why, either.
Or how.
Or how the ordinance and the statutes are really quite strict, and we can only consider is there a violation by notice? Or is there a violation by the town in not issuing a permit for a specific reason? And is that reason supported by the ordinances, or is it supported by the statutes? Or should we say, no, the ordinance is wrong in this applicable case? And could they in fact do what they want to do, as we did with the lady with the shed? Saying, yes, you're wrong, but Derek suggested was a good one to give her a lot of time to correct it, and, and here, and I understand she sold the property anyway, right?
Oh, she did?
And did not record the variance.
So whoever goes there again, if they buy the property, want to keep the shed there, they're gonna have to appear before us again, and...
Yeah.
Which is kind of too bad, but those are, you know, little things that we can do.
Yeah, it's, it's important to, you know, to follow up with what Brad says. It's also important to remember to not make assumptions and statements about wishing town staff had done more, had more communication or anything. These people are there to pull at your heartstrings, they are there to beg and plead to get what they want from you. And I can tell you that we go out of our way to try and gain compliance, figure out a way to make stuff work for people, and sending somebody to the Board of Appeals is either they just can't do it under the ordinance, or they're in violation. But you know, if there was, if there's a way to try and make them legal, that's the route that we take, and it's important to not make statements about communications between whether this happened or that happened, because it doesn't matter. They're there for you guys to make a decision that night on what's presented in front of you. Correct?
Yeah, yeah, if we can, if we can, then we continue it to another month, which we've done before. So, I mean, are we okay? Is everybody okay, or do you think, you know, we should find a different way to do that, or is our process...
I definitely see a benefit of having as much information, which Kami does her best to do before each. Alright, you try to play it out.
Typically, what I, typically what I try and do is I try and do a staff memo. And I try to get those to you by Monday, before the meeting, usually by email. And I try and basically say because unless it's an enforcement thing, it's not really a, the town side and their side, it's more of like, here are the facts for you. Here are the facts for you. And then they're gonna make their case, which is their, 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 you know, please give this to me. But usually what I try and do is I try and basically say like, here's the issue. This is the requirements, this is what they have. This is what they're, they're looking for, for, to be granted for variance. Where like in the gets or in the uh. B and B, it was, this is what they want. Here are the definitions. This is what you need to make a decision on.
Right.
So that you have a familiar area before you go into the meeting and they get a copy of that memo as well, the applicants.
Yeah, see, and those are some of the other things that we are. That we were bound by is in uh. The bed and breakfast case or in the location. I don't want to say bound by that. By the uh. Margin zone. Medium density, uh, business world, something funny, whatever they may be. That if something's in a medium density, no matter what we think, I mean, even if a person has twelve or thirteen acres. That easily could be used for. What the person might have been using it for is the medium density definitions that we have no authority to change those definitions and any decision we make. Are confined to what, what the definitions establish as, you know, by the town, by the state and its statutes. And uh, the way to change those is I. Told one of the people the other night was to go to the, go to the town council. They could go to the town council and try to make an agreement to, to do what they did, or, you know, contracts on it. I mean, there are alternatives, like I said, to contract.
Some of the properties on that's right down the road that did the same thing.
You know, and I don't, there, there's.
Brothers.
Yes.
It's been resolved.
That was a contract.
Right, and, and the more, the, the longer I've been here and the more I get into some of these things. There are a lot of changes that we need in our, you know, some of the definitions are pretty weak in our ordinance and. As these things come up, it's, you know, it becomes apparent.
Especially with the original intent of extending the. Water line down Route one hundred, this is everything. Was not necessary for houses, but to serve businesses, that was the originally intended to be a business district. South of the village off of one hundred. And so many people started building houses in there because of the medium density terminology, the businesses were. It was changed to medium density and. Not a lot that we can do about that, but um. Okay, so. I know I'm gonna behave now and, or at least work on striving to get that a little bit better. Uh, the next.
I wanted to mention one thing or bring up for, bring up one thing with the.
These are only my thoughts, I want you to know that.
Right, so as we're, as we're following this, going through one through eleven. After number seven, which is the chair will ask for comments from the public. As we're going from one to seven, if we. If the meeting starts to lose control, if we start seeing signs of the meeting losing control. A court would have a. Gavel.
Yep.
We don't want to have a gavel.
Well, there's one up there, buddy.
There is one up there.
Yeah, there's one.
And there can be.
How about?
Use if it's necessary.
I think that would irk people, maybe a bell, can we, yeah, maybe request the bell just to kind of. It's a little softer, a little easier.
I, I think that, I, I mean, I think that it's.
Other than hearing a gavel.
But I think it's Brad's role that, and I think that he has done. You know, I, I watched that meeting. You know, and I think that you, 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 you stopped people when they were getting, getting out of control. And I think if they had continued, you probably would have done, you know.
I think it might have asked for a recess.
Okay, as for what?
A recess.
Yeah.
Yeah. To give everybody time to.
Cool down.
Cool down and break. But I don't, I, I don't, I personally don't want to use something harsh. I mean, if you have to use a gavel, I mean, it certainly does attract attention quickly.
Right.
Hmm.
But a gavel.
But in a meeting, but. The way that that meeting was going, if it, if it had escalated even further, I think you wouldn't have been out of line doing that, in my opinion.
Definitely had a gun butt. No, but any, any suggestions on these as we meet in the, in the future, let's, you know, let's not be afraid to talk about this stuff so that. That we're, that we're on the same page and again, that we can maintain a, a decorum. That is worthy. Of the public, you know, giving. Giving. Or are earned in the respect of the public.
Hmm.
So that we are already a body that. Doesn't get carried away with ourselves and. If we need to take a break, we'll take a break, if we need to slow things down, then we slow things down so that people can get their collective thoughts together. Before we, you know, make a mistake or, you know, speak out or. Get a little carried away or whatever it may be, we need to, we need to do that. I mean, even though the town appoints us to this position. Unless some town council has caused to say, Bradley, we don't want you there anymore. Uh, then uh, we actually have no responsibility to the town except due diligence, due diligence. Of hearing the cases. Again, as they authorize, as the statutes grant us the authority to do. That they don't really have control over our decisions. They can react, they can change, modify ordinance or whatever they may need to do. But as long as we act in a professional competent manner and we consider all sides of the cases. Then. You know, we, we keep our volunteer jobs if we want to keep them and, and at least for the end of the three-year period. You never know, but, okay.
Yeah, and I think it's important to, to note that, you know, there are other boards, there's the planning board is a. The zoning board of appeals is definitely is a quasi, quasi judicial board. And as far as following up with what Brad said, as far as with the. The council and the authority, there's even a specific provision that says even. A family member of a counselor cannot sit on this board.
Yeah.
Because of a conflict of interest. And so the role that you play is really important. And, you know, when Brad talks about. The composure and, you know, it's really like. It's not entering a courtroom, but it's really essentially the. When I enter a courtroom, I automatically have respect for the judge. And that's what is Brad is, is talking about here. Because it is a really important role that you're playing in this community.
You know, and especially as, as the town council starts to try and uh. Implement more of the uh, comprehensive plan. Then. That's why I wish, you know, the Council Chapel was here. I know she's really interested in how, what our role is with the comprehensive plan. But the zoning board of appeals really doesn't have a role in the comprehensive plan, our job is to. Look at the statutes and the ordinances. And make a decision on that. And although. I will freely admit that the role that the bed and breakfast and the town's desire to have. Those types of businesses in the center did have some influence on my vote. But again, the vote was, well, they don't have four, they don't have five, we gotta make a decision. So he's supposed to move on. The, the second uh, piece of paper or staple thing I gave you was. On the formal duties and responsibilities of the zoning board of appeals as, as this town ordinance spells out. And I don't expect uh, that tonight, we're gonna read every single bit of this, because I have another little thing here on. On the appeals, types of appeals. That's a cleaner than this. But again, as you know, some of the criteria that we look at for the practical difficulties on the second page, number three. For the variance, we'll produce on stable change, I mean, this is a thing, printed right on the form. So when we look at the appeals form, these are the four or five questions. Wrong that the applicant is supposed to fill out and answer. And I would say, Tammy, that I think we're slipping again with some of the applications that come through that. I really want to see the front page, you know. I'm not saying distances. The ones that call for distances, setbacks, stuff, I don't want to see this on an attached page. I have to go look it through, I want to keep my life simple as I can. And if they're asking for a setback on the front page, I want to see all the measurements. Even if they are done with the street, I might really feel bad for that guy. I really do. He tried to measure out in a hurry, so the guy digging the foundation hole uh, could get it done, so when he got.
The house that was.
Yeah, so when he got there, it's like, why didn't you just ask the guy that was digging the hole, the hole, the tape for you, so that it wouldn't slip?
What year was this?
It was just a little, right. So, nine, nine twenty-one, twenty-two? Recently. Twenty twenty-two?
It was right before, it was about a year and a half ago.
Yeah. I mean, I really.
It was a little, little white house on the, on one of the back roads, wasn't it?
Yeah, on, on the back road, I mean, across the street from one of our former members later, I mean, I had to take a porch down or something, so. We did something with it, but I mean, just a simple, a simple little mistake like that. And it's like. But it goes see the town council, the courts or something, because if we tell you to tear it down, you tear it down. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever.
And materials.
And materials, yeah, that, that's not good. So, you know, sometimes in the next thirty days or so, you know, just take a look at this, I mean. I took it out of the ordinance book, I mean, everybody should have it in their ordinance book anyway, uh, so if they didn't, there, there it is. This, this page covers uh, looks at our legal rights and responsibilities. And the fact that the use of listed in the zoning ordinances are provided in the four categories.
All right.
Okay, they're divided into four categories, permitted uses. I mean, that's, nobody will ever come to us with a permitted use as long as they're in compliance. Or the conditional permitted uses, and these are things that the planning board actually does. Uh, prohibited uses, which they absolutely can't do unless specifically provided for. Uh, by state law and in, in those cases, when they come to us, more than likely, they have to be studied by the courts. Or similar uses that are variations of permitted or conditional uses that develop over time, and sometimes we do look at those and there are some small camps. Around the lakes. That have. I was quite surprised, there's a friend of mine playing construction. And he lives over on Birchwood Road and he came to the town to see what he could do with. He actually can build on the lake side of the road. Because his lots by the deeds are grandfathered for construction.
Right.
And it's like, other people are gonna see that, and they're gonna, and they're gonna complain and. And I mean, we would never see that, there are people that are in those situations that we need to take a close look at, I mean, there was a person that. Was converting an old summer camp for kids, I guess it was, something. And we had to determine in that particular case if. The permit was quite old, but. Had they started and done substantial construction. To be able to continue the permit.
Substantial is very subjective, right?
Exactly, so we had to. Yeah, we had to determine if they're, you know, uh, putting twelve pilings, you know, good sized pilings down. And move the foundation or all the, and all the foundation work, if that was substantial. Construction. And what was kind of used as a measuring tool, where was the. Uh, prohibitive costs. But otherwise, would have been occurred. To actually move that stuff and start over a year later. More than a year later, so we filed that to implement substantial construction. And allowed the permitted appeal to go through. So they could finish the job.
Each situation, I'm sure, definitely has its. A little quirky.
Exactly, it does, it does. Now, this is the. Bed and breakfast thing, definitely my bed and breakfast. And I'm wondering tonight if we want to. Make a motion or otherwise direct. Uh, the code enforcement officer to. Approach the ordinance review committee. I wish I would do that to say that the. Ordinance or the definitions. Of bed and breakfast and motel hotel. Need to be. Changed to reflect. That a bed and breakfast. Uh, will be. Provided as. Five or less units.
Worth in time.
And a motel hotel will be six units or more.
Yeah, I don't think that you can do that. That eliminates a gray area.
What I want to do is make a recommendation that the code enforcement office or the ordinance review committee. Look at the definition and as a result of an appeal and ruling by the zoning board of appeals. That the definition be changed to clarify bed and breakfast. Five or less. And a motel be six or more.
And think that you can make a recommendation that I approach the ordinance advisor, I mean. Advisory committee or, I don't even know if I need to do that, I think that it could be a change that. I could do with the planner and it could be brought in front of council to get it changed, to clarify it.
I think.
But as long as it's.
I think that we could do that anyway, because as a committee, we have the. Authority by. Charter or council rules to present motions for change to the council. Without going to the ordinance review committee if we so want.
Yeah, I think that you can make a, a motion to have a recommendation. The part of that that I don't know if you can do is to actually include the language that you would want included in the ordinance. My, obviously, I am going to approach the ordinance committee and say. There's a gray area here, this is unclear.
Right, just because we just talked about, because we're supposed to be neutral, we shouldn't be favoring.
Need to clarify it and.
No, but, but we can, we can suggest and favor a change, which is reflective of the ruling that we just made. Okay, which we just legislated for, for or less.
Yeah.
And there was no legislation for that or no statute for that before, so I'm suggesting that we again. Request a legislative or an ordinance change. That bed and breakfast under definition, where were the definitions, you know, it's fine definition. Or definitions anyway.
Isn't a bed and breakfast slightly different business than a hotel motel?
Yes, it's, it's very different and.
Certainly.
That would.
And, and it's different under code wise.
And then where do Airbnb's fall under this?
They, they're not really addressed.
No, that's a, that's another issue.
It's.
Okay, bed and breakfast, it's right here.
But yeah, I, I can, I will talk to Kristen and Doug and I will, and I will have them. Clarify that, if you want to do a motion to that, that's fine, but if. I'm gonna do it anyways because we need to. Not have another one of these and.
I forget where.
Would it help though, just to have wait with you and saying, we also think that?
I don't need it. Not, not with them, you know. I mean.
I'm looking for the one that actually says the three rooms or less.
Okay, this has been breakfast with more than five rooms. Under hotels motel.
Okay, but what's it say before that? Isn't there one?
That's just hotels. It is there somewhere, because I, I remember reading it as well.
Yeah, because the one that's, there's a portion in there that says three rooms or less. Just, just, this one says three guests per night.
Oh, there we go, bed and breakfast, a single family dwelling in which lodging and meals are offered to the general public for compensation. Offering no more than three bedrooms for lodging purposes. So then you look at hotels motels. And it's five rooms.
What's the definition of?
More than five rooms.
What is the definition?
Definition includes bed and breakfast with more than five rooms, tourist courts, motor courts and motor lodges.
See, so we get that, we get that, that little void there of three rooms max or more than five.
Yeah.
So we.
Nothing for four and five.
Can I see the definition of hotel motel real quick?
Right here.
I'll bring it up on the following page. I'll give mine, I have closer ready and I only gonna go like two pages. Page twelve. But I think that we need to recommend a change, we made a that ordinance.
On large say, the average argument. Large C, the average occupancy is not to exceed three persons per guest room per night. Suppose you're traveling with two kids.
Two rooms though.
Okay, they may have to make it take two rooms, huh? That's true.
I mean, yeah, because a bed and breakfast, you know, really isn't. I don't think the bed and breakfast is a family vacation.
You don't have to explain that one.
Well, I I do think that that's a change that.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Kristen about it, and they'll agree, they'll make that.
Let's 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 pull a little off. I make a motion. The ordinance review committee. Reexamine definitions of bed and breakfast. And motel hotel. Recommendation bed and breakfast be five rooms or less. Motel hotel be six rooms or more. That's the recommendation I would ask them to. Is there a second to the motion?
I second the motion.
Are you worried about just having the number, having a number set? So you can just ask them that same thing, not have any numbers involved, just let them eliminate the eliminate the gray area.
Yeah, what I what I would do is I would go along with the motion for sure. And then the only thing that I would want to check is that. And I think it might be up to five. For the B and B is covered under like the residential code, and so you don't get into all the heavy fire suppression stuff. And I would just ask them that they change it so that it's in importance with that, but you can make your motion however you want it, and then.
I I would make it the motion that way, and then the planning board, when, well, whoever goes to the planning board with their plans. Could you stand in condition one? That they will. Say, oh, we'd like to see fire suppression on something. No, we could do that. Let let the planning board do that through their standing condition.
Yep.
Are we okay? Uh all those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous. Paul makes the motion, uh second was by Georgia Woodbury, and the vote is unanimous. Okay, the other thing I would like to finish off with tonight is. This is a. This is a handle that Andrew Hill Legal uh did for Main Municipal Association. And it's a it's a a pretty good uh explanation of the variance, the undue hardship test. That when we look at undue hardships. Better understanding. Of the landing question can't. And they explain each one of those uh in kind of like a step by step. Now, we say one often the parents make where they use the word locality, but it's all one and the same. Uh reasonable return.
Oh, sorry. No, I was gonna talk about that, like one of my very first ones was we had a reason, what is a reasonable return? I even asked them when I went to my training, and they didn't even give me a straight answer. So that's something that should get like settled, someone someone to take eventually to the Supreme Court, because like I literally asked the lawyers during my training. And they were just like, well.
Well, actually, this this law firm has got a couple of statutory uh Supreme Judicial Court cases listed. Uh reason the reasonable return from the undue hardship is bet. Where strict application of the zoning ordinance, I mean, they call it that, would result in the practical loss of all beneficial use of the land, although we couldn't use the land. Now, Tumi versus the town of Fry Island. Pretty much met the strict standard. What it boils down to is that. Land still has value, whether the permit is granted or not. The possibility that property might be sold to neighbor is not sufficient on its own, as you be to find to find a reasonable return. Uh and that was a guy that on a beach that I think was the that's the beach one. Where they had two small lots along the beach, and the person bought the lot next door because they thought they could expand the size of their lot. And it was, it was like denied. You can't, no, you can't build on that just because you bought another lot to make your lot bigger. Your your lot still has reasonable value to it, so they didn't let that happen. For a five bedroom home, a smaller home could be built in compliance, or this is another one, the Fry Island thing. Have difficulty getting a journey for a five bedroom home when a smaller home can be built in compliance. And you really do not need to plan to demonstrate that your lot is practically useless when they can build a three bedroom home and get good return. Or a five bedroom home. So they lost that case, and they could only build the three bedroom home because their property still yields in return. You know, a reasonable return, I mean, reasonable return doesn't mean if you want to sell your property, you make profit. That that's that's a tough one. Land in question cannot yield a reasonable return without variance, example one, I'll just read this out quick. A landowner has a principal dwelling structure at once, one or more setback variances are a lot size variance. In order to build, this, we had a case very similar to this.
No, you're right.
An accessory structure.
Yeah.
They wanted to build the apartment, such as a garage or expand principal structure, add an extra bedroom, a porch or a deck, or even a second dwelling. Uh you know, where principal structure exists, it is virtually impossible. Where a principal structure exists, it is virtually impossible to satisfy the undue hardship test. Proposed accessory structures or expansions would generally constitute maximizing the owner's return of land. Rather than seeking a reasonable return on the land. They weren't gonna let them milk it.
Right.
For everything was worth.
Could could one argue recently discovered, could PFAS fall under that category? If it's obviously high enough amounts? Uh that's not a question for us, I just thought.
You know, that's that's a real good question. I'd hate to be a litmus like.
No, right. You know, me looking at the virtually impossible, there has to be one example out there, I would think.
No, but I tried to think of it, I tried to think of examples as well, and I thought. The only way that you could meet it would be as if it was like. Contaminated with something.
Yeah, right.
And there was an ordinance in place that would prevent you from cleaning it up. But it would be so rare that. You know, that hardship one is in courts have.
Yeah.
Said even a vacant piece of land, it's not buildable, can still be used for.
Raw material.
Camping, tenting, picnicking.
Herein lies the case that I was thinking about. That. A number of main court cases have dealt with the issue related, the taking issue, if you will, taking, you can't use the land. Uh the landlord's hall lost their seasonal cottage due to severe beach erosion. They bought an adjoining lot for two hundred dollars. The owners of that lot had removed their cottage because of erosion. The halls began using their two lots as one from that point, which makes makes sense. They obtained a building permit from the town to build a new seasonal college. With their application to the Bureau of Environmental Protection, BEP. Under the sand dune law. To build a new cottage was denied. So these people went to court. To appeal because they had grandfathered lots and stuff like that. Ultimately, what the courts found out through investigative process. That the original owners had only been using the lot, the beach lot they had due to erosion. To put a camper on. And were spending seasonal time there camping in their motorhome camper thing, so their whole appeal was lost. Took the property still had reasonable use or return for them as it was.
Even though they are minimizing their.
Exactly.
No, no, but but if that was the opposite, if that was a house or a they were, would erosion be an example, possibly?
Uh probably not for us, but for the.
Right.
For DEP, yeah, or BEP, I mean, anytime that we have a shoreline case, that discusses with Doug. Uh I'm not sure if you're doing it, I request, because they have the right to have input on that. They actually rule, because it's shoreline zoning. That I want to make sure that we send. And we're doing this, the application to them for review, and then they comment and send back. Now, sometimes they haven't commented or sent anything back, and my direction to uh. Your predecessor, Tom, Tom Raineswell, was Tom. I don't care. But I want something from them, an email or something, so that that they have no comment, or they have no issue, or. They've received the email, so that way, the town couldn't go to court and say, well, DEP never commented, so we we've denied this. And I know DEP chose not to comment. And we approved. So. They didn't care enough to comment, so that was good enough for me to say they don't care one way or the other, so let's give these people what they want. Yeah, but I mean, another case, Brooks versus Common Farms, Common Farms, they wanted to have an audit over their gas pumps. That was going to violate the setback from the streets. And the local board said no, and the Supreme Court said, well, no, you can have gas pumps, you just don't need to have an audit. So they they lost their. That being the audit was too, this edge is. That was too close to the rope. So they said, no, see, there's smaller warning and no audit at all, but it's still. I mean, those are some of the, and I'll I'll make a copy of this, I mean, actors running out of ink at home.
Kind of nitpick sometimes, I think.
Well, you know, they made uh Martin, but that's the. That's the hardest part, I think, of zoning board of appeals. Is that we are by statute required to make our decisions within the strict limits. Of the ordinance, of the ordinance or the statute. The statute made statute says you can't build within two hundred feet or two hundred fifty feet of shore. Or the shoreline or whatever it might be, or, you know, we. Like, okay, let's take a look at the whole thing. We had a case that last year, the guy that wanted to build the garage up on some somewhere off Cape El Shore Road. And uh. They changed the shape and design of the garage, and we let them do it, because they weren't making another egress, they were using the same driveway. And it would have been totally impractical for them to build it on the other side of the house, because then it was too close to the lake. And there wasn't a lot of sympathy about, we don't care if you can store your kayaks inside or not. But we allowed them to build, because it was in the nature and the character of the neighborhood, and everybody else in the neighborhood seemed to have their garages up, you know. And just the fact that they weren't tearing down a burn, they weren't going to be cutting down a whole lot of trees, and building trees. Uh yeah, I mean, so look, and we act within the strict guidelines of setbacks and and character. But. Those are the some of the things that we need to deal with, and I have asked the town manager to set us up with a. A specialized zoning board training. Not with Main Municipal Association, but with the town's corporation attorney. So that they can deal strictly with us, and at the same time, we would be more than likely meeting with. Members of zoning boards uh from our surrounding towns. Because I mean, we do have a lot in common, especially.
Yeah, that's true, that's a good idea.
It's a lot of lakefront.
Right.
And Wyndham's got a lot of lakefront, and because Raymond had that real nice. Uh case on Sebago Lake where a guy cut down, how many hundreds of feet of trees? He cut down hundreds of trees right along the lakefront.
Wasn't it two lots?
And clear cut two lots right on the water.
Right on the water, he's facing. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines.
But as he should, because he did it in Casco. Before.
Sounds like he knows, it sounds like a bright, he builds. Yeah, he he knows how to build it into his budget.
And they're trying to figure out, they were trying to figure out if it was possible to revegetate it.
He will have to revegetate it.
Yeah.
And that's gonna cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars more to put down back similar trees that were eighty, ninety feet high.
Ooh.
It's gonna take twenty, thirty. Forty years to.
We grow and grow those, yeah, obviously, wanting a better view of the lake.
What are they gonna do after?
I have no idea.
I mean, but the impact on the, you know, the regulations are in place. Often times to, you know, especially with shoreline zoning, that's a huge impact on the resource. And when you start taking down large amount of campuses like that, you know, it's phosphorus runoff and. You know, you'll read articles about lakes that used to be spawning grounds for certain type of fish that aren't even open. Because there's such high levels of different chemicals contained in the fish that. That 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 and 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 we're losing these. You know, throughout the state it's starting, and so. You know, that's a lot of why we have such strict shoreline zoning regulations is because.
Between fertilizer runoff and the state not stocking certain lakes.
Laundry soap got phosphorus in it, doesn't it?
That's one thing I learned even going up to the state house, is just how important the shoreline is. Tony, that's the one thing I always hear, like, just bump bumping around, there's a couple bills up there. It's sensitive, it's very sensitive.
In terms of zoning board of appeals. As much as we'd like to, it's it's not a platform for land advocacy, as much as we might want it to be, because we have that. Well, unfortunately, we're not a soapbox. But I don't have anything else on the agenda, I don't think, uh.
No, that was it, types of appeals.
That we'll have a a meeting in June unless there are some applications within the next ten days or so, right?
Correct, because the deadline's pretty quick.
And we will wait to see uh what the town manager can set up with us for.
That would be great, yeah.
That's a good idea, I like that.
No, I've asked him to do that.
Yeah, you've mentioned that.
You know, our town manager is is strong on CBA, because he actually is a member of CBA at the town who lives.
Oh, is he?
So he knows. About that stuff, but I want to be able to draw upon that uh from our attorneys. Main Municipal, you're a fine organization, uh your training for CBA uh is coming up short. Yeah, I think they they know that. But trust what small towns need.
Yeah.
And what we as as members need.
If we can work on that training and have that available for five or six surrounding.
Exactly, so that's that way everybody can, I mean, Raven has had cases.
Individual town.
Raven has had cases that have made it to Supreme Judicial Court. And Fly Island was a case that. Appealsant was denied, it was the land, Supreme Court used land, it's something to the effect of. The land has value, because you could still put a fire pit on there and enjoy the scenic beauty of the of the lake and pond. That you want to build on. And that was a real, that was a hard one to swallow, because people have been using that as a precedent setting case. You can't build what you want, but you can build a fire pit and a little camp there and enjoy the pleasure of it. Kind of like the speech guy, oh, you can use that for just your trailer or motorhome, yeah, okay, you enjoy the property value of it. But thank you very much for your time, and um. And I was, I've always got to open the air, because I don't want us to be so strict that we can't. Um have playful meetings, and at the same time, we need to make sure that we. Have that decorum about us, that.
Maybe on my part, uh the last meeting there, I did have a couple of questions. Moving forward, I think I'll be asking questions or more details in the packet that we received.
I think I think that's fine.
Yeah. So I think it's fine. It was a fantastic first meeting for me.
Okay, in that case, uh there being no other, this is, does anybody else have any other business?
I have no business.
Saying that we we use the famed Robert's rules of law, seeing no other new business or old business, we are adjourned. You know, I I picked that up from the school board, Marty, because they do that all the time, see, no other business, the chair just calls them adjourned.